What you been doing? Running all times, going?
No.
What did he say?
Yeah.
Now, can you mail his sister?
Uh huh.
And she has right to answer that as a house. You know this is from the 90s.
Did you find that when you were moving?
No. I dug it out. You know, even just found and determined we were all gonna, you know, wear these back in the 90s. You just think how long it's been, how long?
I probably couldn't wear this much.
Oh, I got you. Never mind.
Yeah. I shrieked. I might go in front of you. So you really, so you really love him?
Yeah. And everything's there, but the guy's painting, and we don't close until Friday. And so I was sleeping at Todd's, which is a real joy to enjoy. Two teenagers and a dog.
You been traveling since then?
No. And I don't know who you are or what you're doing.
We don't have together.
I was saying, you should wait on us.
Do I? They are sending us a picture. We're photographing how pretty you are.
Break the camera.
I don't know. Who you gonna let go?
Yeah, I'll go to Doc's.
I went to you.
Yeah, he's local, local on the area.
Yeah, well, I went to a guy there. Smith, he did my show. But for my knee, I did Dr. Bean. So I don't, but you know, I did that twice, and he's actually, he's, uh, loved it. So you know how that is, it's like nothing I did. So I don't know. My, my, we finally decided we're gonna do another one. She said, if you tell me something, you wouldn't still be.
It's a waste. Yeah. How can you even replace it?
Yeah. What do you feel about that? Cause I didn't know.
Yeah. They tell me they come from, oh, I'm not there, they come from. You know, but. Oh, maybe I will.
And then I went to a thing where they shoot that jail.
At the jail, I was.
It's amazing. It was one day. And then you wait for it. How long you so high? You do five visits, and then you wait six months. So that, after that was one. The next session, and it's all done. So then, you know, with the X-ray, and y'all did this, y'all know the body, it's nothing, nothing. So we gave him a minute, but I can't, which is letting me sleep. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll be here in five minutes. But, you know, a lot of people, you know, just get over their part, right? I don't know what, if I take, I don't know, my wife's, it's all, I don't like Bobby. I don't know. And I love the city, the city's actually really, really great. You guys, see, they'll be nerfed, and it's not easy.
Yeah, but can you see that? Can you see where? See, pretty mama, that's. Yeah, I mean, if I turn it a certain way, I see that. I would tell them, this guy's a veteran.
That's good. That therapy will kill them.
I'm sitting up here.
Hello. I was sitting there. I was.
I got a whole leg.
I'm not telling you. They get so, those are useless, like, what's in use? Okay.
He didn't pull the term around, he didn't try to. They wasn't. I was. Oh, I know. Bobby.
I just left it right there.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem. It's been fun.
Yeah.
Beth. Beth. How do you get this special? This is vintage. Oh, wow. This is. Yeah. I don't know. 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 Thank you. Yeah. I don't know. Bobby.
Not my title. I'm just.
Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you. I'm just. Thank you.
Yeah, but can you see that? Can you see where? Can you see where? See, pretty mama, that's. Yeah, I mean, if I turn it a certain way, I see that. I would tell them, this guy's a veteran.
That's good. That therapy will kill them.
I'm sitting up here.
Hello. I was sitting there. I was. 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 Bobby.
Not my title. I'm just. 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 I'm just.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. It's been fun.
Yeah.
Beth. How do you get this special? This is vintage. Oh, wow. This is vintage. Yeah. 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 Where's Beth? Beth. How do you get this special? This is vintage. Oh, wow. This is vintage. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
No. Someone get the knee down. Grab it, you spread it. Whoa. Oh, yeah. It's still on my knees, though.
Yeah. I'm here to. 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 I'm here to.
See, here's something. I'm gonna need her, but I got my phone. I'm gonna need you, though. I'm gonna need you, though. You want one? Okay. All right. Trust me.
Yeah. 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 No. Sure, no, I'm not. I'm not. Yeah.
I took it earlier. I guess. Celebrity. And it's one of the great ones.
It's still, oh, it's. Yeah. 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 My son's birthday. Yeah. My son's birthday. Yeah. His birthday's that. Well, I was done there. Yeah. 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 I used to.
I used to. I used to. So.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, hopefully our parents drive. Hopefully, I'll say.
Yeah. Have you been to? I thought everything. I think I came up, man, it's in the city. I like this shit. She more alert. No, I didn't do it for her. For that too, or that? I'm starting to hate this because I'm.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
This man won't make it. I don't need a lot of time to get on. I gave mine up. Yes. Hey, I'm not my look. No, I think he looked at me. It came on, but no words came out. Now that it was updated, so. Oh, really? Oh, still. I still might not be doing it. I think he might be. Right? Yeah. You know what? It's terrible, though.
I'm worried. She's been moved out.
I'm gonna test for my. Ninety-six grand, too. But that too, or that? I'm starting to hate this because I'm.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
This man won't make it. I don't need a lot of time to get on. I gave mine up. Yes. Hey, I'm not my look. No, I think he looked at me. It came on, but no words came out. Now that it was updated, so. Oh, really? Oh, still. I still might not be doing it. I think he might be. Right? Yeah. You know what? It's terrible, though.
I'm worried. 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 I'm worried.
I think he might be. Right? Yeah. You know what? It's terrible, though.
I'm worried. I'm worried. She's been moved out.
I'm gonna test for my. Ninety-six grand, too. But.
Yeah. 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 Well, that's a good. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Governmental funds. So this is kind of the way you think about your revenues and your expenditures, kind of on more of a budgetary basis. So you've got total revenues of all governmental funds, so this excludes gas. Total revenues, sixty-three million, eight hundred and four thousand dollars. So that's your total revenues. Total expenditures were fifty-nine million and twenty-two thousand dollars. And so what that means is the net change, what we call net change in fund balance, it's kind of like your net income, you know, if you were a business. Net change in fund balance for all your governmental funds, which includes your general fund, was positive four million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand. So if you went back and looked, I think last year, you actually had used some of your fund balance, so this year you've went the other way, which is very positive. The big change, I think, there is some of the increases in your revenues. So that's just a very positive change. That's your governmental funds. You also do have proprietary activities or enterprise activities, which are your business-type activities. Those are in separate financial statements. The income statement for that one is on page nineteen. So I just want to point that out. That's page nineteen. It's called your Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Fund Net Position. And you'll see there, you have a change in net position for gas and sewer of positive nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four ninety-two. So both of those increased in net position as well. So it's like both of those had a little bit of net income this year. So that's really, you know, this report is very long. It has lots of notes in it that's kind of gives you additional information of the various numbers. So if you wanted to know about your debt, if you wanted to know about your deposits, I mean, just about anything you could want to know is in those notes. But I don't typically go over those. I just like to hit the high points on the numbers to let you kind of know how you did. But what you really want to know from us is that it was a clean opinion. I know you guys go over the numbers probably very regularly. It was a clean opinion with no findings, no real issues with internal controls, which is what you're looking for.
Very good. So that, does that mean a recommendation to keep Jeff Hopkins for another year?
(laughing).
For sure. For sure.
I will say, you know, speaking of that, you know, this was our first year doing the audit, and it is very difficult having new auditors come in. I know that's difficult. It's hard for us, it's hard for them, but they were very easy to work with. So I always like to kind of brag on people that are easy to work with. They were very quick in getting us what we needed, which makes things go very smoothly. So we do appreciate that.
Well, we look forward to the partnership. We appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you for having us. And we'll get you the final reports as soon as we have, like, the tourism stuff. You'll get your, your final.
Very good. Thank you.
She said today, we appreciate everything they did as well. And we'd have Brian for watching, seeing what's happening. We were nervous to Cheryl, especially, because I think we stayed up late. But they did make it easy, and it's kind of what we wanted. They came in, and they were easy to work with. It wasn't right-your-face-gone thing, so it was a partnership of work between the other two. We appreciate it all.
That's what we like.
And that's mostly Jordan, so you can thank him.
Good job, Jordan.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I think they're gonna head out, too.
Out on my move. Judge Howard, are you ready?
I am ready.
We will start with the first reading of ordinance number one, twenty-twenty-five, annexation of seventeen-fifty Gaither Station Road. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
This is a first reading by summary. This ordinance annexes property at seventeen-fifty Gaither Station Road, owned by Elizabeth Town Hardin County Industrial Foundation, Mark and Wesley Thomas, and Alback Pence, LLC, totaling approximately one hundred and fifty-four acres. The property will be zoned regional industrial, or I two, upon annexation based on the Planning Commission recommendation. The owners gave consent to this annexation, and the city gave the required forty-five-day notice to Hardin County. The full text of the ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk. This is a first reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to ordinance number two, twenty-twenty-five, annexation of twenty-thirty-one Bardstown Road. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
This is also a first reading by summary. This ordinance annexes property at twenty-thirty-one Bardstown Road, owned by Larry Hall IRA, totaling approximately point four-eight-two acres. The property will be zoned regional commercial, or C three, upon annexation based on the Planning Commission recommendation. The owners gave consent to the annexation, and the city gave the required forty-five days' notice to Hardin County. Again, the full text of the ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk.
Any discussion? Seeing none, ordinance number three, twenty-twenty-five, annexation of Ring Road Patriot Parkway. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
This is also a first reading by summary. The ordinance annexes property at a thousand and one Ring Road and Patriot Parkway, owned by A and P Development LLC, and Christopher and Danell Knight, totaling approximately sixty-eight acres. The property will be zoned regional commercial, or C three, upon annexation based on the Planning Commission recommendation. The owners gave consent to the annexation, and the city gave the required forty-five days' notice to Hardin County. The full text of the ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk.
Any discussion? Thank you for cleaning that up, because I missed the thousand and one part, and we were getting ready to annex Ring Road and Patriot Parkway, I think.
(laughing). I think we already have most of it.
Which brings us to the second reading of ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, amendments zoning map for thirty-five-hundred Litchfield Road. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
This is a second reading by summary. The ordinance amends the official zoning classification for the property located at thirty-five-hundred Litchfield Road from urban residential mixed, or R five, and high-density residential, R six, to planned neighborhood residential, two, to allow for such uses as single-family homes. This change was recommended by the Elizabeth Town Planning Commission and approved by the Elizabeth Town City Council, as it was found to be in agreement with the city's comprehensive plan. The full text of the ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk. This is a second reading, and therefore is now available for your consideration.
Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, council member Bishop?
Yes.
Council member Folkerson?
Yes.
Council member Springsteen?
Yes.
Council member Tab?
Yes.
Council member Walker?
Yes.
Council member Willoughby?
Yes.
Motion carries, six oh. Thank you all. Municipal Order seventy-nine, twenty-twenty-four, amendments to the Personnel Handbook. If I can get a motion in a second to read.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city has personnel policies and procedures that were adopted in Municipal Order Number Fifty-six of twenty-twenty-three, on November twentieth of twenty-twenty-three, that enumerate policies and procedures for all employees relative to employment, employee conduct, job descriptions, compensation, job performance and evaluation, and benefits. And whereas the mayor and the city council desire to revise various sections relating to leave time for voting and medical cannabis use, now be it ordered that the Employee Benefits section of the City of Elizabeth Town Employee Handbook relating to leave time to vote, and that the utilization of medical cannabis by employees is not permitted in conformance with the city's drug and alcohol-free workplace policies. Those policies are attached as Exhibit A. And all other sections of the handbook be reaffirmed as adopted in July of two thousand and eighteen, including equal employment opportunity and American with Disabled Disability Act requirements along with drug and alcohol policies, sexual and non-sexual harassment policies, and safety program. Be it further ordered that the mayor, and/or his designee, is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, including providing notice to each employee. Read, adopt, and approve this sixteenth day of December.
Discussion. Need a motion in a second to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Order carries. Municipal Order Number eighty, twenty-twenty-four, approving contract change order for Litchfield Road, US sixty-two, and South Ring Road Sanitary Sewer Project. If I can get a motion in a second to read.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city accepted the bid from Frederick and May Construction for the Litchfield Road and South Ring Road Sanitary Sewer Project by Municipal Order Number sixty-two of twenty-twenty-three, and whereas the city council in authorizing the contract restricted administrative approval of change orders for the contracted work not to exceed seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and eighty-five cents. And whereas unforeseen issue has arisen in performing the bore at Valley Creek, the subsidence in the creek bed has caused the work on the project to halt and has caused delays in completing the project. It is necessary to change the scope of work under the project to include the plugging of the subsidence area and then completing the bore in accordance with corrective measures approved by the Kentucky Department of Water. Now be it ordered the city approve the change in the scope for the bore at Valley Creek to be performed on a time and material basis in an amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents, and to allow additional time under the contract to perform this work and complete the entire project. Be it further ordered that the mayor, and/or his designee, is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, including signing change order documents. Read, adopt, and approve this twelfth day of December.
Any discussion?
We didn't hit a rock, we had a hole. Sorry, I felt like I was discussing anything else.
Unfortunately, they didn't hit rock. That's the problem.
That's the problem. They had a hole.
Yeah, so it collapsed, and so what, instead of boring under the creek, what we're gonna have to do is build temporary dams to stop the flow of the creek, excavate down, repair the area that has collapsed.
Put rock in.
And put rock.
You take some rock from where is it, right over there, and add to it.
It is time and materials. We're hoping and expecting it to be less than that amount, but that is kind of the worst-case scenario, if dams fail and we have to spend more time stopping the water flow and things.
Never thought I'd wish for rocks.
My understanding. Anybody else?
Thanks, Ed.
Need a motion in a second to adopt, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Municipal Order eighty-one, twenty-twenty-four, authorizing contract with CMW for Nature Park. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city received funds from the Commonwealth of Kentucky under House Bill One during the twenty-twenty-four legislative session for the Elizabeth Town Parks and Trails Conservancy Project, and whereas the city and CMW have worked on multiple projects at the Elizabeth Town Nature Park and Freeman Lake Park, and whereas the city now desires to proceed with the, with the design phase of said project, and has the necessary funding under the contract with the Commonwealth of Kentucky for said project. Now be it ordered that the city approves the contract with CMW for professional design services for the Elizabeth Town Parks and Trails Conservancy Project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These services shall include design plans for trails, parking areas, restoring facilities, and a new facility at Freeman Lake Park and the Elizabeth Town Nature Park. It's further ordered that the mayor, and/or his designee, is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, including signing all agreements, contracts, documents, and forms. Read, adopted, and approved this sixteenth day of December.
Discussion. Need a motion in a second to adopt?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Municipal Order eighty-two, twenty-twenty-four, approving contract amendment with HDR Incorporated for the preparation of a regional wastewater facility plan. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city has contracted with HDR Inc. for the preparation of a facility plan for the future expansion of the Valley Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility. And whereas the city currently has HDR under contract to analyze and evaluate the current and future service area of its wastewater treatment facility and system-wide capacity, and to develop preliminary design plans, specifications, and estimates for the construction of various new public work projects, and to prepare a regional facility plan to be submitted to the Kentucky Energy and Environmental Cabinet. And it has become necessary to change the scope of that work. Now be it ordered that the city approves the contract amendment with HDR for additional professional design services in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. These services shall include additional planning and projections for the wastewater treatment facility and service area, and the state-requested revisions to the regional wastewater facility plan. It's further ordered that the mayor, and/or his designee, is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, including signing all agreements, contracts, documents, and forms. Read, adopted, and approve this sixteenth day of December.
Discussion. Need a motion in a second to adopt, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Which brings us to city council information items. The next meeting of the city council will be next year, January sixth, twenty-twenty-five. The city will observe the following holidays, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and January first, twenty-twenty-five. And I do want to express my appreciation for our event staff, and Beth Powell, who's sitting in the third row, and I thought that our Christmas parade, even though it was frigid cold temperatures, went off beautifully. And it gets better every year. I kid you not, we were in the parade route, and there were people on the sidewalk that had brought their own portable fire pits, and there were fires on the sidewalk where they were staying warm, but they still came to the parade. So that means something. They enjoyed enough that they had their own heaters and their own fire pits, and I just thought that it was a magical evening. And so I want to thank Beth, and Priscilla, and Gabby, and Hadley for all that they do at events, also all the other departments that were involved, and pretty much all of them. And if you go downtown and look at our decorations, and look at the job that they did on City Hall, that Mrs. Enman had them put the gingerbread houses up, and also at the State Theater, it looks great, and it gets better every year down there. So credit to you all. Thank you all very much. Y'all have anything? Okay. So after we get done here, please join us for the oath of office for our new council members at six, and I will open the floor if anybody has any public comments. With that, I am gonna get probably to the worst part of the meeting, something that I dread, because we are going to say goodbye to three tremendous council people that have sacrificed their time and gone above and beyond for a long time in serving the citizens of Elizabeth Town. We are gonna start. Tab?
Get y'all's chair. Get your chair.
So Bobby Tab came in and did a tremendous service to not only the city government, but the city of Elizabeth Town. Mr. Wiseman unexpectedly passed in June, and we needed somebody to fill his unexpired term, so it was quickly decided by the council members that Bobby would be a perfect fit for that. He'd already had previous council experience. He loves Elizabeth Town, grew up here, lived here all his life, raised family here, he's smart, had a great business background, a construction background, and some of them had already served with him before when he was on the council prior, and they enjoyed doing that. And so you were, if not the first, one of the first for sure, that they started talking about when it came time to fill that unexpired term. And he readily and happily agreed to finish out that term, and he's been an asset for the past six months in our council, and I really, really can't tell you how much I appreciate you, and how much the council appreciates you, and how much city government and our constituents appreciate you and your time and service.
I appreciate it. I do. I was glad to do it for him.
Yep. I understand.
Thank you, everybody. I've really enjoyed it, and city's in good hands. We'll be fine. Thank you.
Our next council person is a young lady that has been serving since two thousand and fifteen. She is smart, she's got lots of energy, she is always prepared, she is willing to fight for what she believes in. She and I have gone at it more than on one occasion, and I never held it against her for being wrong. But she's somebody that I have learned a ton from, and I appreciate more than she probably realizes, and she's been an excellent council, council person, and we're gonna really miss you. I love you, I appreciate everything you've done for the city. And so Cindy Walker.
It's gonna be short, I'm not gonna be backblaming crime like her. But I do wanna say, it's been a wonderful ten years, and it's flown by. And I remember when I first had people approach me to run for city council, I was like, oh my gosh, I don't know anything about the city. But I sure learned a lot in ten years. It's an amazing community, there's always amazing things going on, and I know there's a lot to come. I've enjoyed working with this council, the previous mayor, Virgil, who didn't want to be recognized, but he's back here, and all the employees, I mean, they're all wonderful. The head department heads, they not only care about the council and work with us, but they care about all their employees, and we work very hard to make sure they know how much we're appreciated, because they're appreciated, not us. Because the city wouldn't be what it was or is without them. So thank you, and I've enjoyed this journey, and I look forward to the next chapter in my life. Thank you.
Any other ones up into that comments, please, feel free.
I think you're doing great.
All right. And then finally, my friend Virgil, who doesn't even have to give a speech. Virgil touched on a little bit earlier, we've known each other a long time, because we've both been in law enforcement for quite some time, and we work for different departments, but our departments work closely together. So I already knew his character and his integrity, and what he's capable of doing, and I also had a pretty good idea, but I learned a whole lot more over the past six years about his heart, and he cares about people. He cares about our city teammates. And I don't know that anybody has ever fought for the city teammates that we have more than Virgil Willoughby has, as his three terms on the city council. And he's responsible for the work environment, and a lot of things that have gone on to improve their work environment here with the city of Elizabeth Town, and we work pretty well as a team together. And the one thing, may not have always agreed with him, but the one thing that you could never question was his character and his integrity and his intentions. And so I'm gonna really miss all three of you all, I'm gonna miss you, Virgil, I appreciate everything that you've done for the city of Elizabeth Town, and I wish you well in retirement, or whatever you have planned for the future.
The only, only other thing I will say, though, I did not realize as much as far as, if you have an agenda, whatever that agenda may be, you can't get anything across the finish line without these guys. Okay, so all I'd say, I mean, I might have been the one that was jumping out the bound on our first budget, but all, like I said, everybody, everybody was on the council, Matt and others, anyhow. It was a team effort, and I'm just glad we was able to get that accomplished. And thank you very much, as well as Ed, and Jeff, and Shirley. Sure, like I said, I know, just those budget meetings and trying to, hey, where's this meeting coming from, and what are we gonna scratch, and what are we gonna do? You knew guys. You'll have fun.
One thing that I'll leave you with, and if they want to make comments, I'd love for them to do so, but we go to, we're heavily involved, the city of Elizabeth Town is with the Kentucky League of Cities. And so we send representatives, matter of fact, we have four representatives on KLC's board, and we send representatives to different classes and different opportunities to work with KLC or get training from KLC. And when you go to those, and they'll all tell you this, you hear horror stories about other municipalities and their mayor-council relationship, or their relationship with the employees or teammates, or whatever you want to call them. And so, I was kidding with Cindy, we don't always all agree, and matter of fact, we get everybody with each other from time to time. It's just the truth. But we don't take it to the next day, or to the next ordinance, or to the next municipal order. We get over it, and then we reset, and we work together again. And we donate our dirty laundry in public, we discuss things, and whoever wins, wins, and you move to the next thing. And I think that's very productive. And so I think the reason, at least I feel like we've been very productive, is because we've all been very professional. And whether we agreed or disagreed, we definitely care about each other, and know that all of us combined care about this city more than we care about ourselves individually or as a group. And I think that that's what's been very special about the councils that I've been able to work with, and I hope that continues, I'm sure that it will, but it's one thing that makes my role a whole lot easier, and one that's very enjoyable, is to be able to work with great people, like the three that are leaving us and the three that are staying. So I just want you all to know, I mean, when I say how much I appreciate you all, because you've been fabulous. So.
Thank you.
Marty, I know you have something to say.
You know, a lot of people say, gosh, you all get along so well. Well, they're not on those one-on-one phone calls. Cindy is just ripping me. No, and I, one thing that I appreciate is, obviously, there are disagreements on how to do things, accomplish, but that goal has always been what's best for the city and the cities, citizens of the city. And the passion to which these three have served has been unbelievable, and it's been an honor to serve with them. And yes, we've had some disagreements, and thank you, Mayor, for not telling Cindy she was wrong all those times.
Why, it's just me.
Oh, if you're gonna get closer, I can. But I do, do appreciate them and the passion to which they serve the city, and I know they're still going to. Bobby, man, what a champ you were to fill in for Mr. Wiseman, and we can't thank you enough for that. Virgil, Cindy, it's been an honor.
Amen.
Likewise.
Yeah, we always say, it's, it's kind of a unique situation, and I've had the opportunity to serve with several folks on the council. I guess I'm the grandpa now of the council, I thought Ron was, Ron Thomas was, but now I am. That's scary. But, but it gives us a good opportunity to see how our community is and what we're all about. We're a unit, the whole community, and this council represents that. And I often say, well, Cindy's like my sister. She, we're joking, over here's my other sister, and we got a baby sister coming on.
You saying Lamar?
Yes. But, but we, we do, we do disagree, but we, we're a family, and sometimes that's what families does, is they pull each other's foot and hair, and we go on. So I really appreciate each one of you and being a part of our family here at the city and our community, so we'll be missed.
All right, well, with that, we are going to adjourn, and then at six o'clock in the room behind us, we will swear in the new council, and so I will leave it up.
Do some pictures.
Oh, yeah. And yeah, pictures in between if you haven't already had it done. I'll let Judge go direct traffic on that one. Reed, what, did Reed still in here? Yeah. So with that, I need a motion in a second to adjourn. Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
No, I'm, Jeff.